Minutes ago. Um. But it turns out we had a technical difficulty and no one could hear us. Um, we've moved to more. Room seven. Um, and we will start with. Public comments on non-agenda items. If there is anyone who has a public comment on anything that's not on the agenda, then please raise your hand. I see, oh, what? Who be? Yes. Hope.
Hi, thank you so much. Just quickly, I had confirmed with your admin that I was scheduled to be on the agenda this evening. For the LGBTQ progress flag raising issue and vote. And I see that I'm not on the agenda and I know that April third, which is your normally scheduled meeting is also town meeting. Is my understanding. So my, my question is. When would I be on the agenda since according to your office, it was an oversight that I wasn't put on the agenda this evening after being confirmed?
I can answer that. Yes. Hi, Hope. This is Kathy. Yes, um, I think there was some confusion because you were actually on the agenda for our last meeting two weeks ago. However, we deferred the discussion to the April eighteenth meeting. Which is the next time we're going to be discussing the governance project because you're correct, our, our next meeting is not until after town, town meeting.
Yeah, your admin had asked me if I could do it on March sixth. I told them, no, I couldn't. And so she asked me if I could do it on tonight's meeting. I said, yes, I could. And that was on February thirteenth.
Okay. Miscommunication, apologies for that. Um, we're not prepared to discuss that tonight. It would be the next scheduled time Greg was April eighteenth.
April eighteenth. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on items not on the agenda? There be, I see none. So there is no chairman's report and we will go to the alcohol license transfer hearing.
Um, I move to open the public ring for the alcohol transfer license for thirty five.
Thirty five. Yes.
Second.
Brian.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Yes. And Kathy, yes. Okay, who would like to speak for the new like the candidate license holder?
Good evening, board. This is Greg Richard. I'm the attorney for the applicants three MB LLC. Uh, with me tonight are the owners of the LLC three MB LLC. Uh, Matthew Kane and Margaret Kane. Uh, also with us tonight is Nick and Tanti, who is going to be a part of, of the team. Uh, once the restaurant is open. And I also see with us tonight is representative from the sellers team, Ms. Ally Varga, uh, who's also on the call. If it, if it pleases aboard, I, I, I'm happy to open the presentation.
You need to share, do you need to share your screen?
Uh, I, I do know. I don't think I need to share my screen for this unless there's anything you'd, you'd care to, to review. I think the application is pretty straightforward.
Um. Please proceed.
Okay, thank you. Um, so like I said, hopefully the application is pretty straightforward. This is an application for a transfer of an existing liquor license. Uh, the current location, uh, the current owner is Glenn Varga. Current location is thirty five Beach Street, which operates as Ally's Beach Street Cafe. Uh, the location will remain the same and the type of establishment will remain significantly the same. Uh, be a table service. Uh, uh, primarily lunch and dinner restaurant. Um, currently my client is under agreement with Mr. Varga to purchase the assets of the restaurant. Uh, one of the components of that is obviously the transfer of the liquor license. So, um. Essentially, we believe the submittal is complete. Uh, very straightforward and accurate and more or less speaks for itself. Uh, we're, we're looking for, uh, this to move on to the next phase with ABCC so that the, uh. Review, internal review with ABCC can be completed. And, uh, we can get this finalized. I know that my clients. Are both eager and excited to open the establishment under their ownership. Uh, I, I know, I understand that the seller is quite eager. Uh, to have this accomplished as well, uh, because it's important for them. And so, um, at this point, we're just looking for this to move forward to the next phase. Um, and so I'd ask the board. Uh, to approve that and, uh, thank you for your time. And, uh, if there are any questions, uh, you know, I'm happy to do my best to answer them.
Thank you, Greg. Um, is the application in order?
So it all appears to be in order. There's an extensive file, some paperwork. Uh, we gave you the summary of what was included, but not all the paper was, it would be appropriate to move forward. You could certainly ask any. All the questions you may have or ask any, if there's any questions from the public.
Brian, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good enough. Looks complete.
Kathy, any questions? I have no questions. Is there anyone, um, on Zoom who has a question about this transfer of licenses? Seeing none. Um, do we close the evidence? Is this, we, we'll. We need to close.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Oh, Brian.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
And I say, and says, yes. Is there any further discussion?
No. Me.
Um, is there a move to approve?
I move to approve the alcohol license transfer hearing for thirty five.
And I'll second that.
Brian.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
And says, yes, Kathy, yes. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night and good, good, uh, good work fixing the technical difficulties.
The technical difficulties.
Thank you all.
And. John. Right.
The next item on the agenda is the harbor management.
Well, I think we have Brian on. Oh, yes, still there. I just want to run through your, your list of folks that you assembled.
Sure. So, uh. We have a group of great volunteers. Um, we have Jim Elder, who's, uh, our shellfish warden. Sarah Creighton from planning. Henry Ottinger from Concom. Tom Baker of Manchester Morning, who'll represent waterfront businesses. Chris Glass and John Croft, who are two resident recreational boaters. Jim Doucet, uh, will represent the fisherman, the lobsterman. Steve Mayo for the Harbor Advisory Committee and I have forgotten to write down, we do have a representative from the stream team as well. The only, uh, group I wasn't able to secure a name for were the downtown businesses. I would say, uh, well, I reached out to. The chamber and they haven't gotten back to me yet. So if they come forward with someone, we can add them at a later date. Um, but, uh, all of these folks have volunteered to work with the harbor management plan working group.
Any questions, Kathy?
I do. Um, although we haven't. Um, approved a formal policy yet, we have had some discussions about. Hosting openings for boards and committees publicly. And I'm, I'm totally fine with all of the. Um, candidates from the specific affiliations that you have listed, but. The recreational boaters, um, there appear to be two at large, if you would, positions on this committee. I was wondering if we posted. Those openings broadly to encourage citizens to participate.
I did not.
So we announced that a few times at your meeting.
Yeah.
We didn't go beyond that.
Yeah, that's where the response came from, from, um. Your, your meetings, folks who are. Uh, either on or heard word of mouth.
What? So I, my concern is I just, I would like to, we may not get any takers. My personal. Approach here is I would like to approve everybody on the list, but. But the two recreational boaters and just ask for an open call for a week, you know, a week or two and just. Have that opportunity for someone who may not be aware to raise their hand. And if nobody raises their hand. We approve these two, two gentlemen on the list. I just would like us to get in the habit of. This open posting as opposed to just relying on who we know.
Sure. So I'll, uh. Reach out.
Well, hold on. That's just one person's opinion. We, I think, yeah, we need to hear from the rest of them.
Sure. Um, this might be kind of a corollary to that, but I, I know that, uh, you're planning to work with the Urban Harbor Institute. I think that will be a consulting group that's got a lot of experience dealing with this. Correct, Brian?
Well, that's, that's certainly, uh, the group of the most experienced that I would recommend.
Okay. Um, I guess my question is, right now we have. At this point is so, well, these are the groups or the people that should be represented on here. And it would probably be helpful with whatever consulting group we're going to speak to. What their recommendations might be, because there might be some group. That we're not thinking about that. They say, hey, in our experience, this is a group that's had a lot of opinions or input and we don't know that yet. I, I mean, I have every confidence that I think we're probably touching all the bases, but. It, it seems to me it might be just a little premature to say, okay, this is what we're going to do. Without taking a little advice from somebody who's done this fifty times or done it enough times that there is some. Some input that, uh, we might, we might get from them. And that's, that's kind of related to Kathy's point, but not. Not, not quite on that. I just don't, you know, the, the group could be modified. I mean, we could say, fine with these folks and then modify a little bit going forward, but I'm just wondering if we should do it all in one shot. And not only, as Kathy suggests, see if there are people that are interested, but also. Speak with this consulting group, which seems to be kind of a, the, the way we're going and saying upfront, is there? Somebody else. This is what we've got.
Brian.
I'm comfortable. I think that, um. As far as the recreational voters, uh, go, there's obviously, um. They're engaged. They know, they know about it. Okay. And they want to be engaged. All right. Um, and I think. Not with lack of better term, not a fishing, fishing expedition, but I think that. Let's get started. I mean, we can add, to John's point, we can always add, once we, once we do, uh. Uh, engage a consultant. This is, this, these aren't numbers that are set in stone. But I, I think that, and I'd like to get this thing started.
Oh, we certainly can advertise, uh, publicize the lack of a business representative rather than require having the chamber. That. And I, I. Personally think that having. Voters who are not. Not on the. Harbor, Harbor Advisory Committee and, and, and there, there are people who have been paying attention and there's. So perhaps. We advertise now, um, for a business representative. Take your advice too hard.
Okay.
And. Do it better next time. Um, and be prepared to take. Uh, this is a committee of twelve. Um. I think probably committee of fourteen is not much worse.
I, I do wonder about John's advice, though. It is a large committee already. What if, um. Do we have a, I guess my question is how close are we to a proposal from this, um, potential? Uh, Urban Harbor Institute? Um, have we already engaged them?
No, we, I'd inquire to see if they'd be interested. They certainly are. Um, as, as a governmental entity, it's a little easier to procure them.
Okay.
You can go from government, government.
So I guess, is there any, um. If we approved a list of people now, what would they do before we hired? A consulting group? What would they do?
Well, I mean, they could meet a couple of times to, you know, share certain ideas and visions of what this. Uh, management plan might look like. They could talk about, uh. The different consultants that are out there.
Like, I guess my question is, would they, would they participate in hiring, um, giving us feedback on the actual? Um, consultant?
Of the crew.
Okay. Like I, I, I think if I'm okay with approving a group of people. Prior to the consultant, if we give them something concrete to do. Right? Before we hire the consultant, if they're not going to do anything specific, I think we wait and. Till for John's suggestion, get the advice of the consultant before setting up a team. So that would be my feedback.
I. Would probably suggest that. Hiring the consultant might be a good thing for them to do.
Yeah.
Like I said, as long as we're specific about. And then leave it open to adjust the. The, um, composition of the team after the. Yep. After the consultant is hired. So perhaps we position, you know, um, ask these people. On this list by on to help us hire the right consultant, understanding that we may. Adjust the composition of the team after the consultant is hired. So. Make sure they understand this may not be a permanent membership on the team.
Or.
A permanent team composition, the team, yeah, the, the team may be. Added to. I don't, I don't think we're looking to say, all right, people don't belong on here.
Right.
But, um.
Yeah, absolutely.
In addition of one or two.
Yep. Very good. I can, I'm happy to do that. The, uh. I've been very clear with everyone that this is a working group and our goal is to provide information, data, knowledge to. Whoever the eventual contractor is. So, um. Uh. If. The board chooses to, uh, approve these folks. Uh, the, the plan was to have an initial sit down with everybody to discuss. The goals, uh, of a harbor management plan. And the working group's role in it. And, uh, if you, if you want them to. Bring forward a recommended contractor to you. That's great.
Um, all right. So we've got nine people's names down here. The tenth is this business representative. Uh, and is that somebody that you already know, it just is not on the list or?
No, I, I reached out to. Right now. So I reached out to the Chamber of Commerce, uh, with a few caveats that needed to be obviously. A Manchester business and a Manchester. Uh. Resident owned business. And I haven't heard back from them. That doesn't mean that. We couldn't put something in the cricket. Uh, reach out through, uh, the newsletter that Tiffany puts together. Uh, whatever method, uh, I just, I feel like it would be important to have a downtown business. The downtown businesses are impacted positively by. Uh, what goes on in the harbor and, uh. It would be good to have them in on it with their perspective.
When does the next, um. Waterline come out?
Oh, gosh. Uh, hopefully the end of the week. Uh, it's been a couple of months, so. If not the end of this week, then early next week. So it can certainly be in that, but that won't reach the downtown businesses so much. No.
But.
So they'll reach the boaters.
It's, it's, it's a place. It's, it's, uh, multiple channels. I think that's your point and would be good. So you're pointing, get with Tiffany. She can. Do a posting and, and Anne makes up a good point. Your waterline, um, column is also another good channel.
Yep. Yep, absolutely. It will be in there.
Are there any, is there any further discussion? Uh, can we have a motion to approve the, um. List presented, um, as the initial makeup of the harbor management working group.
I'll move that.
Certainly.
No, of which not what nine or. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine are identified.
Yes. Is there any discussion? Brian.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Anne says, yes.
Yes.
Okay. You have your group. Get them started.
Yes, I will right away. Thank you very much.
Ask.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
See you.
Thanks.
Okay. Um, now we go on to the annual town meeting. Um, where we are going to be discussing, um. Who will be making motions? Are we also discussing funding sources?
Uh, you can, yes, it's the time to do it.
Okay, let's, let's, let's go through the speakers first. Um. And article one, I assume Becky's okay. I will certainly second article two. I move John seconds. This is. The compensation of the moderator. It's integral.
Very important.
Um, article three, uh, is the, uh, North Shore Agricultural Technical. John moves, Brian seconds. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Article four is taxation to pay the town's debts. Uh, Becky moves. I assume she's okay. And Sarah knowledge. Seconds and I, she's never been very shy. Uh, article five, Becky also moves. This is the, um. Uh. Capital. Um. So that's okay. Article six is a school committee article and, um, I'll leave it to them. Article seven is also school committee article. Article eight. Um, is the CPC, um, funded material. And I assume that Jack Burke will be okay moving it and Kathy will be okay seconding it. Um, articles online. Is the OPEB trust? Brian, you prepared? For that?
Yes.
Oh, so Becky will be okay. Might have somebody not here. Um, article ten. Um, is the two revolving funds. And that's Kathy and Paula. Um, article eleven. Um. Is funding the revolving. Uh, funds. For the rec, for the, uh. Parks and Rec. I'm moving it. John seconds. Article twelve. John is, um. Mm-hmm. Closing town hall on Saturdays. Um. When. As if it were a legal holiday and that's John and Brian. Article thirteen, parking fines where we. Dismiss one version of the general laws, which lets us set our fines at twenty five dollars. And they accept another one, which says a fifty dollar fine. Brian moves.
I remember my car.
It'd be expensive.
Kathy seconds. Uh, article fourteen. Is, uh, for new construction of more than, uh, you, uh. Residents campaigning for or more dwelling units will be required to have sprinklers.
So I have a question about that.
Okay.
So we voted on that was the last meeting or whatever.
Yeah.
And it was four to one.
Yep.
I was the one.
You were the one.
So I'm not sure that I'm the right guy.
I'll be glad to move it and.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, let Kathy do something.
Right. Um. Yes.
Right. Which article was that?
That was fourteen.
Fourteen.
Article fifteen, um, is to research and. A contract, um, to aggregate the electricity load of residents, businesses. Um. In order to reduce, um, the cost of electricity in town.
Mm-hmm.
And it's listed as Kathy moves and Becky seconds. Um. Article sixteen. Is, um. Special assessments for people connecting to the water system and, um. For those of you who are deeply into the warrant, um. If you join the sewer system. You can. Pay for the cost of connecting with a betterment. Um, the town will borrow or supply the money to do that and it, it gets added to your taxes. We've done this for the sewer, uh, because we have new connections to the sewer fairly regularly. We have not done it in the past for water. Um, because, um. The vast majority of the tenants on the water, it doesn't come up very often. It seems. And anyway, and I'm going to move it. Brian, you will second?
I will.
Okay. Um, article seventeen. Is a, an adult entertainment establishment ordinance. Uh, proposed by the planning board and the planning board will move and second it.
No, don't get schools.
Yes. Gonna move up.
Um. Article eighteen. Um. The is, um. Describes, uh. Accessory dwelling units and the planning board has voted to pass over it. And I suggest that we move now that we agree to pass over. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Brian. Brian.
No.
I'm sorry. You said, yeah, there's a second.
We're voting.
We're voting.
No. No, yes. Pass over.
Yes, yes.
Anne says, yes.
Yes.
Okay, so the select board, uh, will move to pass over this article. And we will let the planning board introduce it and explain their position. Article nineteen. Um, is senior housing and it's the same situation. The planning board has asked, pass over it and, um. I think we should vote now to pass over it.
I move to pass over article nineteen.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Brian?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Anne says, yes.
Yes.
Okay, that was senior housing. Um. Article twenty. Is our usual final, um, article, which discusses. Any monetary transfers that we need to do to make the budget work. Easily, uh, we don't anticipate any, uh, Becky's is going to move it and, um, Sarah, um, will second. Probably pass over it, but. We'll see if we get to the end of, end of the meeting, whether it's necessary. That. Is that part?
I just have one question on, um, one of the articles that were, um, recommended and approved on. It was just that Saturday.
Um, yes.
Whichever article that was, uh.
All right.
That's, uh. Well.
Article twelve. Just a quick question. Um, I did notice that some of our, um, committees, um. Regularly meet on Saturdays. That would not preclude them in any way. From meeting on a Saturday if we can no longer use Zoom, they could just meet somewhere else if town hall was closed. I just want to make sure that we're.
Well, so the, these group meetings can be open.
They can, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
So it's just, it's just for the offices.
Okay, great. That was my, I didn't realize we had committees meeting on Saturday last week. Okay.
Yes, they can still do.
Okay.
Hey, since this is on the, do we? Want to talk about funding sources for separate lines?
Up to you. So we, we don't have, uh. Final numbers from the school committee. We expect. Them at the meeting tomorrow night to reduce. Their overall ask. Um. And so that would. And should free up some, some tax dollars that you could apply.
Uh huh.
Uh, or you can lower the, the tax rate. So that's. I don't have a specific number. I, I, I got some good guesses, but I don't have the exact number yet. What they're, what this committee.
It's on the order of five hundred thousand dollars.
It is, yes, more than fifty, five hundred thousand, yes.
Mm hmm.
Um, so that's. That would represent another percentage point on our tax rate. Um, so right now, without that reduction. The taxes are expected to go up a few percent, well, just by, just shy of three percent. Um. And. As you know, I was, I was concerned with the reduction in taxation on the money reduction in. Funds flowing to the fund balance. So that's sort of a double hit to the capital plan. Um, so it's about six hundred thousand that we're removing from, from capital. Um, the finance committee was, was comfortable enough with that, thinking that we can make that up in future years. Which you can. Um. But I was hoping to avoid a big spike. In future years on, on that, on taxation for capital.
Do we know what the finance committee, now that we think the school committee is gonna vote tomorrow on a different budget than we recommended?
They haven't had a meeting since.
Okay.
It's true.
But that the finance committee meet this week as well?
They, they meet next week.
They meet next week.
So you could hold off on this discussion until.
Can we make that a joint meeting?
Yeah.
Couldn't make that a joint meeting.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Mm hmm.
Yes.
Okay. What day is that?
Uh.
It's Thursday, right?
Well, next. Next Thursday, next Thursday. That's the third, yeah, next Thursday, the third, yeah.
Okay.
And so, yeah, you can make a joint meeting and that would be a logical, because we'll have the school over the rail down. And that would be a logical time to just.
Then we can vote on that at that time too, because it's an official meeting for us.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah.
I don't know, what is the, the, the thirty?
You can go ahead and stay action.
No, I'm, 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 I'm now.
Just the whole time.
I have a motion. To request that the select board be included in the, the next finance committee meeting be a joint meeting with. Select board and the finance committee.
Uh, salute.
Second.
Is there discussion?
No.
Brian?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Anne says yes, yes. Okay.
Greg, that's seven o'clock?
Yes.
It's at March thirty.
Okay, that. Is. The end of, I think, what we wanted to cover on, uh, we want to set a date. For a post ATM budget process review, yes.
So again, it would be helpful to have that with, with the finance committee, uh, their meeting on the thirteenth. Of April. Um. They will, they will have the, uh, our auditors in, just to review, you know, last year's audit. Um, and that would be a logical time. For you to meet with them again, then, then do a. Review of, of the budget season, um, talk a bit about the next budget season. Um, I don't wanna rush into that, but it's good to keep, uh, there's some thoughts about how to make that more real around. And so let me make sure we have time to do, um, the, the research and, and all this stuff. We seem to run out of time.
Is there any discussion of yet another meeting?
No, I really like that idea. Um, Greg's got some good ideas and, and it's always good to, um. Through a quick review after you go through a big process to see if there's opportunities for improvement, so I'm. I'm, I'm all for that.
I'm good.
John?
Mm hmm, yes.
Okay, so, um, I think this doesn't warrant. The specific motion since it was just.
Something else?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're targeting no four thirteen.
Yeah, seven o'clock again.
At the date there.
Four thirteen.
Four thirteen?
And so. There is. Yes.
And remember the film company brings, there's always cookies and brownies. Whatever.
Yeah.
Works for many.
The dangerous precedent.
It's direct, right?
Right. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the correspondence policy. And. I. The policy in the packet is the second policy from the second reading with, uh. Michelle Rendosa's, our, our three's, uh, comments. Uh, I spoke with Ms. Rendosa at length on Friday and. Um, have distributed independently the, um. My recommendation, my, and Don's, um, for, uh, the policy. And, um. I know that, um. Becky has said that, um, she would prefer to have the lawyer's language, um. And, um. That's presented for what it's worth, of the. There were two points that, that Ms. Rendosa, Attorney Rendosa, uh, recommended. Uh, one was that we make. It very clear that this is not an opportunity for serial negotiate, serial deliberation, that, that, um, that eliminated. Forwarding stuff and it also made it clear that, that we are not to answer each other, um, in. Any member of the select board can respond to any correspondence, but. Don't turn it into a serial negotiation. Um, the other point of contention, um. Was, uh. On the town administrator, administrative staff acknowledging, um, email and, um. Yes, there are undoubtedly people who are, use it, use, who send email to the town administrator. Who are abusive of that opportunity. Um. On the other hand, having. People complain either. To one of us or, uh, online that the town hall is a dead letter box. Is going to work against our efforts to, for transparency, governance and, and general goodness. Um. The. Uh. What I have, what we have put in this is except in extraordinary circumstances and I think someone who is sending. Multiple emails. You know. A, a week would be. Perhaps an extraordinary circumstance, but.
That was, that was gonna be my question. Um, where did the phrase extraordinary circumstance come from and? Is that something our council would be comfortable with, over the scenario?
We, we spoke about that specific language. And, and, you know, she always wants. As, as legal representative, she wants everything to be as gentle as possible, so that nobody can come at us and say, look. What makes this an extraordinary circumstance, but she thought she could defend that language.
So the only concern that I had about, um. The proposed language, I think it was in relation to the concern about the OML, um, I think. This language, though, the good job of making sure we don't deliberately engage in serial. Um, deliberation, however, in a business scenario, it's really easy when an email is sent to a group. For multiple people to respond.
Mm hmm.
And, and my question is, does that accidentally get us into trouble? If, like, if someone sends an email to the group and three of us happen to respond. Does that constitute a deliberation even though we didn't intend to do that?
I think not if we don't respond all. Respond to the person who sent the message rather than. And, okay.
So, okay, so I'm wondering, do we need to, that's the only scenario that I'm concerned about because in a business situation. I can tell you this happens frequently. Someone sends an email to the group and then multiple people respond. Um, so my question is, do we need to adjust anything to? Uh, you know, we shouldn't reply all, do we need to specifically call that out? Just something to make sure that people don't accidentally get into trouble. Um. Is it, is it reply all that could get us into trouble or?
Yes.
However, each of you are responding to the initial inquiry. And it's not really steering, you're not responding to each other. Um, you're seeing what some, you're, you're all seeing what each of you would have said.
Right.
But you're not responding.
Okay.
And that's, that's where we, that's, that's really the line that we don't want to cross.
Okay.
It's having you respond back and forth.
Basically, no, I'm trying to unconvincing. No, a, a single response is fine. Serial responses means somebody replied all, I see what you said, and now I'm gonna say something again.
Yes.
You get one shot.
You get one shot.
And that's it. So I think if the understanding is, it's once. And that's it. Uh, it's okay for other people to see what you said, but you can't react to it.
And so what? What? Potentially could happen is that suddenly the original, the originator of the inquiry might respond to.
Accidentally, it's not deliberate. My concern is not deliberate. This happens in business all the time. And sometimes when you're replying, you may not realize which version of the email you're actually replying to. Because of the way the user interface is, it's just, it happens all the time, so I, I. I'm a little bit concerned about that.
So just disconnect the reply all button.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if there's a tweet here, um.
Yeah. Um. So do not. When replying, do not. Reply only to the sender. And.
Originator, yeah.
The, the original sender.
Yeah.
And do not. Involve yourself in the dis, and do not, and reply only once.
Yeah, yeah. Something like that would be, I think, those all.
But it's not a copy of all on the reply.
Mm hmm.
So Kathy, to your point in those responses that, of course, those reflect your own opinion because you have not.
Right.
Mm hmm.
Spoken.
We have not deliberated as.
We have not deliberated.
And that's, we still have the language in there about the, um, disclaimer, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, let me make that more positive. I think. I maybe just a sentence after serial deliberation, reply only to the original sender. You can reply, in that case, you can reply as many times as you want, because you're not seeing anybody else's replies.
Mm hmm, that's true.
With that change, is the board ready to vote on this?
I can give all of them.
Alright, so this, uh, this. Copy is bidding in.
Uh, any member of the select board may reply to any email. Uh, uh, when responding, select board members shall not engage in serial deliberation, reply only to the original sender.
Okay.
I move to approve. The correspondence policy, um, as submitted with the, um, modification.
I'll second that.
Okay. Brian, yes? John?
Yes.
I vote, I say yes?
Yes.
Okay. Right. Next time we, we need to bring up. Supply policy so that we'll be ready for hope.
Oh, yes, yes.
Good.
Do that, yes.
Okay. The next is on the list is reserve fund transfer requests. Of which we have several. Um.
Okay, so we've got. Time issue here.
We can get the consent agenda.
Uh, let's, yes, okay, we're way ahead.
Or way ahead, which is good.
Okay, um. The consent agenda, um. Includes approval of minutes of February twenty-first. Approval of exemptions for state ethics requirements. Which for those of you who are listening and haven't read the packet, is people like lifeguards who have no, um. Control over, um. Any function of the town government, um. And, and. Don't have an opportunity to, um. What's the word?
Make decisions?
Make, make, no, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to find the actual, um, you know, be self-serving. Um, a Oktoberfest and the singing beach canteen operate, um, is there anything that should be pulled out?
I know that, um. Representative for the October Festival Carnival was planning on being here, but we, we sent.
Okay, well, let's pull that out.
And I'm sure if you didn't have any questions in the crew, that they would be fine.
Hi guys, I'm here in case I can't answer any questions for you.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't see you there.
That's okay.
You're really small.
Yeah, very, very little.
Can you, can you explain just overall what's going to be going on there, um?
So, um, as many of you probably know, the, um. Carnival was an event that had been going on for many years and, um. The, it was a fundraising effort for the athletic boosters, um, and there was a period of time where the boosters. Uh, was not operating at its full capacity and so, um, I think we had chosen as a group, this was prior to. My time there, um. To sort of take a departure from it and then COVID hit and we were unable to get it back for a period of time, so. Myself and Tyler Pinstein, um, a younger person who grew up here. Asked, uh, for the support of the recreation department to bring back the carnival and it was approved and so. We're looking at it as a way to galvanize the community to reconnect with, uh, local business owners, maybe even drive revenue back to business owners. Uh, through such experiences like a Taste of the Town that we would host down at the carnival. Uh, we already have a carnival company involved and ready to work with us. We have. Uh, both the chief of police and the head of the fire department on board as well to support us in every capacity. And, um, we are looking to connect with local business owners as well at some point. To work with them to figure out ways we can, um. Create creative sponsorship so that they can get more exposure for their businesses as well, so. Um, we have shared this with the Chamber of Commerce as well and gotten their approval and any feedback from them. And so we are just, um, excited to move forward and excited to get that approval from you guys.
Alex?
I just have one question, um, amusement company that you plan to contract with, um. Sounds, seems like they've been in business a long time, but do you, do you, um, have you looked into their recent safety record?
Uh, I have not personally looked into their recent safety record. Tyler Pinstein is working with them. It's Cushing Amusement. Uh, they are one of the longest standing companies, um, in the amusement. Arena, so my guess would be that if they're still operating, they have a pretty good safety record. Um, and they've been able to get through, uh, COVID and some of the other challenging times, so, uh, we could start. Uh, we could certainly share that with you. Tyler has all that information as he's been working in the company has been. Amazing in terms of their communication. They are going to meet with us in about a month to come and do a site visit. So. Um, I would invite anyone from the committee tonight or anyone else who would like to come down and join us. Uh, to walk through that and have any questions for them directly to please join us and we can share that information once we have it.
And Kathy, just to that point, we can have actually, uh, found the carnival here in the past.
It was a long time ago. Yeah, I, I understand. My, my, um, I think it's a wonderful idea. I fully support it. I just. Think it's prudent to check their recent safety records. I don't want to find Manchester on the sea by the new, you know. Manchester by the sea on the news because of an incident. We hear about these incidents on the news every year. And I, they haven't happened here and I'd like to keep our records spotless.
Regulated by the state anyway, I think.
Um, it's just, I think it's always good to be prudent and do our own research. So. What is the urgency on our approval?
The urgency on your approval is that these things take about, uh, six months. On minimum to pull together in terms of just sponsors, vendors, making sure we secure. The right time for the police. Um, it's an event that we'd like to have in the calendar so that local businesses in the area can start to plan. Around that and start to promote it and start to use it as an effective way to drive business. Back to their stores and their restaurants. So the more lead time we can have on this, um. The better it can be supported for the community and for the residents. Um, it's an October event, so we have specifically selected that so that it rounds out the calendar nicely. Doesn't interfere with anything going on in the summertime. And, um, like I said, these things take about six months to plan if we want to do it the right way and with the support of. You know, the police, the fire and the community.
And again, to that point, uh, they have to contract with the vendor himself. Alright, uh, this, at this point, uh, I, I believe in Emily Kirk, if I'm wrong. These days were picked, selected because this is the only time that the vendor has left.
I'm only suggesting they check and it should be a very quick.
Alright, that's, that's fair. Okay, alright, so.
Do I have a motion to that back?
I move to approve, um, the, we're approving the whole consent agenda, right?
But we were, we were pulling this one out and then it turned out that the opponent was here, so.
Okay, I move to approve the special event, Oktober Festival contingent on. Um, evidence of a satisfactory safety record for Cushing Amusements.
Discussion? Brian? Yes, you're good.
And says yes, yes.
Okay, um, is there any discussion of any other, um? Item on the consent agenda? Is there a move to approve the consent agenda, the, uh, minutes? Um, exemption from the ethics and the singing beach canteen.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Discussion, Brian? Okay. Yeah, sorry. Yes.
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 John, yes, Anne, yes, Kathy, yes. Brian requires more direction. Okay, still have fifteen minutes. Perhaps we can do the A's on updates.
Um, I sat in a part of the planning board meeting, uh, recently. Um, lot of interesting discussion on the parking study. Um, so the MAPC representative, um, presented the, um. Report to the planning board and they, the action was for the planning board to issue final comments. To the MAPC, uh, so they could close it out. Um, and the MAPC report does reference information from the downtown improvement. Uh, project committee, which also conducted a parking study. Um, he bent, what was interesting was the, uh, key benchmark that came out of the parking study is that if. If, um, a town has eighty-five percent occupancy. Of the parking spaces, that's optimal. So it gives you enough turnover and yet you don't have too much parking. So what they, that's a healthy parking, that's what they said, um. Based on their information and all of the information they, that's been collected. The average occupancy for Manchester's, uh, downtown area was well below eighty-five percent. So what they, um. Their final report provides recommendations on how we can better manage the parking spaces that we have. Um, but bottom line, they don't believe that we need more. We just need to manage. What we have. And so they have some, a list of very specific recommendations. Which include everything from, you know, making the lines, um, more lines, uh, where there are. Um, where there is a lot of parking, simplifying the parking rules in the parking lots because we have a lot of parking. Lots and they all have different rules. And so it's very confusing for people. So there were a lot of good suggestions on what could be done, but. Um, based on their assessment, we, um. We have enough parking, we just need to do a better job of managing it. Pick away.
That's interesting.
I've, I've heard something similar from residents though I've spoken to who have done their own informal parking. The studies and walked around town and counted spaces. We, we have some residents who are very engaged here and. They came to the same conclusion, um, you know, so it's, we, we. You know, there's a lot of things we don't do to manage our parking and, um, it may behoove us to take a look at. The final report and the recommendations. That was something I was gonna ask here because. Changing parking regulations falls under the select board, not the planning board, correct? Right? So we may want to take a look at the final report once it's issued with the appropriate comments. And then have a discussion about whether or not we want to make any changes.
When was the study done? Oh, it was also done in the summer because. Yeah, I mean, the summer is a very different situation than.
So they did a May weekday.
May twenty fourth and Saturday, July sixteenth.
Okay, July sixteenth.
It wasn't the brightest possible sunny day, but as I said, I, I know of at least one resident who went around last July. Marked a calendar of where the parking space in, he came to the same conclusion. I mean, it's so. Perception is reality though. And so, um, I think we, it would do us good to. Take a look at the final report. I'm sure Betsy can get to us once the planning board submits their comments. And then we can decide whether or not we want to do anything differently there. That was, that was the big discussion, I would say, um. Uh, the other item in the, I think that was the big thing on the planning board. I couldn't stick for the whole meeting.
Okay, so, rec department. The, uh. The, I think there's gonna start with the, uh. So permitting, everything is concluded and the, uh, pine, pine street. Uh, field will be, uh, I think start what in the middle of April, I believe. Okay, so that'll start and it should be done. Hopefully before next fall's soccer season for little kids. Uh, pickleball is still an issue. And, um, I think it was, uh, with, uh, there's soliciting, uh, bids for. Uh, different types of sound attenuation and, and fencing. And those are, and those are two big items. The ball's gonna always be an item for a while.
Uh, from my perspective, I think the key issue that I'm dealing with, with, with the DPW and water. And those two topics are pretty much tied together at the hip. Um, we heard from the EPA in the last week or so that the concerns with a, a policy with regard to PFAS. Which is perfluoroalkyl substances which do not break down and are found in, um. Found in water, uh, water supplies, including our water supply and, um. The, uh, EPA has come out with some cutoffs. That they will allow that are below where our assays are coming out and we're gonna have to do something about that. Uh, I think the window of time looks to be about three years or so, but there is a filtration. Technology that has to be used to remove these substances or get them down to below the cutoffs that are involved. Um, and it's a real problem for our Lincoln Street well, which is above the cutoff. The, uh, the, our water source. Up at Gravelly Pond right now is at about the cutoff, maybe a little bit below, but we need to put in a filtration system to remove these substances. And our filtration system can really only be built at Gravelly Pond. So that means piping the water up from Lincoln Street well to Gravelly Pond. Uh, for the filtration treatment, which is about a two and a half mile hike. And, uh, this kind of affects Chuck's plans, the DPW's plans with regard to replacing our piping. Uh, because that pipeline from Lincoln Street well would go up Pleasant Street. And that would have to be dug up and with, he's also looking at when things are gonna happen with regard to, uh. Uh, the bridge out here in front of, uh, in front of the town hall. All, all of this activity has to fit together. There is some timeline that he has to work with with regard to this treatment, but, uh, he's going to, uh, the, the most. Cost-effective route will probably be to pipe the water from Lincoln Street well and that supplies anywhere from forty to sixty percent of our water. It's about fifty fifty overall for the two sources and treat it all up at Gravelly Pond. And so it's a construction initiative that's going to have to be, uh, dealt with in the next year or so. So this is information that really just came down about, about, about a week or so ago. And Chuck is rescheduling what he, he wanted to do Pleasant Street. This summer and in fact, uh, the town is voting on replacing those pipes to the tune of about two million dollars. And that's not to say that they definitely have to be those pipes, but he's gonna do something with that, but he may have to shift around his projects a little bit. So that he can, he's not digging Pleasant Street up twice. He's only gonna do it once and. This will have to happen, well, with the pipes, it was gonna be like School Street. It's a construction project, but you're not digging a whole trench. But for this situation, he's gotta dig a trench. So he has to figure out, uh, how that's all gonna fit together. So that is a capital expense that is going to have, the, the town is good, is gonna have to look at. Not surely every town or most towns are involved with this challenge. There will be some monies out there. There's a lot more that has to be done to see what can be handled, but it essentially is about. An eight to ten million dollar expense. It is not a minor expense.
Also, the eight to ten was doing a plant at Lincoln.
That's just the plant. Well, I won't say it was that high because he's got some space and he can move things around, but just the piping. Was going to be in the area. It's certainly many millions of dollars. Okay, and then the treatment. He's got, he's got some piping, you know, some plumbing up there that he can kind of work around. Uh, in place and put in the appropriate filtration operation there, but still that would be several million dollars. So yes, our, uh, capital build budget may be affected in the next few years.
Well, that budget meeting joint finance after the town meeting is increasing the sense of urgency.
Yes, that's correct. That's correct. There are other, other findings that the, the water resource task force will be coming up with other findings. I'd say that's the major one that has kind of come down. We were always concerned about this because this has been a pending. Uh, a pending concern for several months, probably six, seven, eight months and. Um, they came up with their, uh, their, uh, EPA came out with what it, it wanted to see, as I say, two weeks ago.
Those are, those are draft regulations.
They are draft.
Well, they will be finalized late this year. By the time EPA puts a bow around it. Um, so, you know, it's hard to say for sure, will it all, if you end up where it's proposed, but it could well.
Yeah, right now that looks to be the most, yes, and that looks to be the most cost-effective approach for us. To ship all the water up there.
Does the, um, task force have any plans to, um. Recommendations around. Uh, increasing community, uh, increasing communication to residents. So that we can educate ourselves on how to prevent the PFAS from getting into the environment. That's something that maybe the sustainability committee could help with or.
Uh, they possibly could. I mean, PFAS is a function of. Everything, it's in everything. It's in consumer products, industrial products. And, uh, I mean, the best solution is don't have your water source around any kind of. Uh, any kind of commercial activity, more people activity. And the foresight of, uh, folks two hundred years ago to put, I don't know, it wasn't that far back, but had Gravelly Pond is very good. Okay, and so Gravelly Pond is fairly, uh, you know, is, is fairly well protected. There isn't a lot of things going on around there. Lincoln Street well is in the middle of everything. And it's very hard to try and deal with, uh, our numbers are not crazy. But there are so many different ways or possibilities of possible contaminants and it's, it's just very hard to deal with. So, uh, I mean, one of the things we've looked at is maybe we close that pond. Now, the fact is, is we, I think still would be in trouble with Gravelly Pond if we just use Gravelly Pond because our numbers are really right at the cutoff. We're still gonna have a problem.
You're still gonna have to filter gravelly.
Yeah, yes, that's correct.
Thing that people can do to, um, change their habits to prevent it from getting any worse.
Uh, we haven't discussed that in real detail because it's very difficult to know where these are. Coming from, we thought they might be coming from the arti- from the artificial turf. At the high schools because that's an input, um, and those turfs are being replaced over the next year or so. And the manufacturer has tested or has guaranteed that they will test to make sure there is no PFAS coming from those. But it's difficult to know exactly, because it's right on Lincoln Street, exactly where things are because it's. It's so many, it comes from so many different, uh, things, but we are, as part of our findings, certainly going to recommend some conservation initiatives.
Right.
With regard to, uh, water in general. As well as some other things, we want to replace some of the meters. And we want to excel our, accelerate our piping replacement, which Chuck is working at, but. It, uh, at the rate we're going, it'll take us, what, probably fifteen years to replace all of the pipes, sweetie. Eighty percent of our pipes are like nineteen hundred. Or nineteen ten earlier. They're very old. And to replace them all, we like to replace them more aggressively, but it is an expensive undertaking and he's spending, um. You know, a million, two million dollars a year to replace all of these pipes.
And, and, and. The town is supplying that money.
Yes, it is. That's, it is by far the biggest number in our capital expense budget each year. It's the, it's number one. First line. And this year we wanted to spend, in the past year, I think, what was Lincoln Street, Greg? About a million, a little more than that? Or, uh, I mean, School Street. I think it was in the order of a million to a million and a half. Okay, alright. And the, he's gonna be spending over two million this coming year. I'm just not sure if it's gonna be Pleasant Street or somewhere else, but he's gonna be spending.
Tying that back to our. Um, funding sources discussion. Maybe one of the things we should consider is, is spending some of the money that will not be spending on schools on more, uh, waterland work.
Yeah, it would be good to understand, uh, to Anne's point, what the constraint is. Is it. Funding or is it personnel? Is he bringing people in from the outside to help accelerate the work?
So, yeah, projects we always bring in. We're not equipped to do those projects in-house.
And is there any issue with acquiring that type of, um?
Labor, uh, not so much the labor, there's huge issues with the pipe.
Supply chain challenges with that.
Yeah, you can't dig up all of your streets.
Right, there's some components for the construction, but there also may be other constraints and we should. That figures into the timing of when you can do things. I'm just curious.
Well, uh, uh, I mean, the fix, fixing the, the bridge over the brook here.
Right.
Is now a big factor, because when that happens, then traffic has to get detoured and. And he's gotta make sure that he hasn't got. He hasn't got two construction projects that are on top of each other when that goes on.
So when is that scheduled again, the song?
That'll, um, most likely be a year from this fall, so the fall of twenty four.
So the disruption on Pleasant Street. Has. Could be this summer, could be next summer. Without.
Correct, without overlapping.
Without overlapping.
I think you'd wanna make sure. Pleasant Street's nice and clean, because that's gonna be the.
That'll be the.
You want it all lumpy.
So the people go slow.
So the people go slow. Okay, um, I'm. We're we're at about eight o'clock, perhaps we can go through the reserve fund transfers. And um. I. Don't have a specific. School of. These on reports, other than what Greg has already reported, that that they have found. More retirements than expected, a better health insurance. Quote, and um. I'm sure something that I'm forgetting that. That 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 um, will allow them to adjust their budget. So. We have in front of us a reserve fund transfer in the amount of twenty five thousand dollars. To fix the um. Fire, the pumper um. Company transmission. And. The finance committee has approved it. And. It's up. To us. Let's vote on each one, this just to make it absolutely clear.
So I moved to approve the request for transfer from the reserve fund, the amount of twenty five thousand dollars. For the uh, repair of the fire engine number.
Go ahead, yeah.
Second.
Any discussion? For a vote, Brian?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Anne says yes, yes. Yeah, he says yes unanimously. Of four thousand dollars um. To cover um. The uh. No, but I lost this one completely.
This delayed salary.
This is.
I moved to approve the request for transfer from the reserve fund in the amount of four thousand dollars to cover the. Uh, salaries of the Z B A.
Second.
Discussion. Vote, Brian?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Anne says yes.
Yes.
The next one is um. Nine thousand five hundred and eighty dollars um. For an unanticipated maternity leave.
So in other words, there was someone else that came in. That had had to fill in, okay, understood, all right, I make the motion, yes.
Second.
Discussion. For a vote, Brian?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Anne says yes, yes. Ninety five thousand dollars for the. Fire department overtime um. Due to medical leave retirement, et cetera.
And this will take us through the end of this clear.
Yeah.
And does it generally allow, have three people, three trained firefighters?
Which he's got a limited number.
Yeah.
I moved to approve the transfer from the reserve fund in the amount of ninety five thousand dollars to cover the fire salaries overtime.
Second.
Discussion. For a vote, Brian?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Anne says yes, yes. That's that. And.
Next question, uh. It's about. We need another, if this is the right time, did we ever get a report on what's going on with the uh? The ladder truck?
So it still has not passed. Standards.
And.
And we're still waiting to hear back from the manufacturer.
But wasn't there an opportunity to, was there a discussion about?
The state came in, D P came in for a third pass and possible waiver. Um, and they declined.
Nice to stay. Okay, thank you.
Be in tomorrow morning.
Okay. The. Six regional requirement system um. Is asking its member communities to approve a five percent increase in um, the pensions. Due to the um, inflation. And each could. Thirteen communities need to approve it in order for it to the cola increase to go from three to five percent.
Has been come with it, why you didn't obviously, Greg, that was my question, the last time this was brought up, I asked that Ben. Take a position before we take a position.
So we could do that next week.
I just, I'm not comfortable with us.
You can just take a vote. After that discussion.
Okay.
That would kind of be my preference.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I guess we can just pass on. Pass over that.
Just one question, Greg, you mentioned that one town had already voted uh, to not approve it, have there been any other? Houses that have taken on votes since you um.
Hey, I guess we're up to the town administrator's report. Which project does have a bad must.
Yeah, a few, a few things to uh, highlight. It's the Supreme Judicial Court, as you know, in. Uh, we will be getting some more direction on that. From town council, and we'll be doing, we'll be doing um. Little analysis and. Other recommendations, and your packet was a letter from the A C L U. Question there. Actually take on the case and how we um, manage things going forward. You know, it's one of those things that. Not a very honest case, but. Expectation certainly is to still. Have people be civil. Um, you can't. Prevent someone from not being. Particularly civil, but as long as they haven't crossed the line of threatening or violence. But it's also funny, I don't think we. Need to spend a lot of time worrying about, and I really think that the expectation is that we will conduct meetings and they. And we expect people to behave and express their opinions. I don't see a big change. Going forward with that. Um, at least certainly that's how. So I I don't wanna make too big of an issue out of it, uh, in terms of sort of highlighting it, I just, I'm paying more attention than it perhaps deserves in some ways. But on the other hand, we certainly need to.
I was just gonna ask, would we? Would we wanna either send a communication to them or?
At a minimum, but but would we do an extra training for boards and committees, it's certainly could be a topic, we'll get the materials from from town council and share that.
So um, s- um, I'm planning with Debbie to meet again with the board and committee chairs. Um, the week of April tenth.
So we should have some.
So if there's some, we could certainly take that opportunity to share, but not everybody was able to come, so we'd still need some kind of.
So I do, uh. Again, you uh, in the packet, there was a copy of. A recent advisory that the attorney general's office sent out regarding the M B T A zoning. Forty, forty A three A. One can call it M P, M B T A zoning, um, in any case, the upshot of that advisory is um. I would say that the state is is raising the stakes. You know, in the M B T A zoning, and that it's not just a matter of a town deciding. In their opinion, uh, before goes in funding. They they feel that it. It is the law, that towns are to comply, and if towns do not comply. Then there could be legal consequences. For not complying. So it it certainly raises. The stakes. And um, puts a, puts the understanding in a different light. That we have had up until this time. So, nothing to do at the moment, but again. Uh, council will be looking at at it and giving some guidance. Um, and so we'll have future conversations. But it it is out there on the street, wanted you to be aware of it.
You know what prompted? Uh, maybe it's obvious, what prompted this, all of a sudden, they get. They're getting a lot of pushback from a lot of communities.
There's been some pushback, I I don't. I have a good sense of how much, um. There's been a couple of towns. I think there's four towns that have not submitted the action plan. Uh, I know of one town who says we're just like. So I think they wanted to get out in front of that.
There may be also a change of governor that.
Yes, I mean, certainly, both, both the governor and lieutenant governor have said housing is a top priority of theirs. Uh, they they have both said that pretty strongly. Uh, that they really wanna see some movement in in increasing the housing stock, so. They they see this as a tool for helping do that.
Yeah.
This is a pretty hot topic. Uh, the the whole, the M B G A zoning is a very hot topic in town, is there some way we can get this information out? Fairly broadly, that that there has been a change in. The state. Approach.
Yes, we can, we can, uh, we can certainly post the advisory. Uh, on the M B T A page that we have set up. Um, I can do an article on it. For the cricket in the future. Um, but yes, I agree, but this will be of high interest.
And 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 it'd be nice to get accurate information out. So, so yes, we can put that on on the on the um. Website. As soon as possible. And and maybe. A precis of it somewhere. Because it's 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 a several page thing and then.
Yeah, so I think it was even highlighted in Boston Globe, Front Page, Gloucester. Question, um, I don't recall the schedule we're working towards, I know that Betsy had um. Published or submitted, what, when is the um? What is the plan for? Understanding how close we are to already complying.
But we certainly hope to have that data. Collected and the and analysis done by summer time.
Okay.
The next few months, couple, couple of few months. Um, so, um, you know, a little behind schedule, we need to. Keep the task force up and running. Realistically, we won't really get active until after town meeting.
Because once we have the current state, we know how close we are. Then we can really engage the county town to. Get their ideas and thoughts, okay, you know, we're this close. How would you suggest? We comply and. It it really is a, an important starting point, um, because if we're really far apart, then there are some very difficult conversations, but if we're. If we're close because of the way our general zoning is. If if, you know, the conversations could be completely different, so I, that's a really important first step, I think.
Maybe on April eighteenth. Um. The interim town planner could. Sure, give us just a snapshot of where. Where she's going and and what the process is going to.
And then lastly, uh, some upgrades on some grants and those, uh, you've submitted to, which called the one stop portal. Um, either state, um. Seeking assistance for the M T A, M B T A zoning analysis. Um, also, um. Some watered sewer uh, analysis. Um. Um, specifically though, for water to be mixed extension to the L C D for the. Turnout for the C S T project, obviously it'll have some additional benefits beyond.
Is there a study on that?
I'm sorry, I I missed one, it's, that'll be for receiving funding.
Okay.
For the construction of the extension.
Is C S D um. Driving that process or are we?
It's combination, so we we have to be the applicant. Uh, that's the municipal municipality to apply. And so, um, the initial submit was was fairly straightforward, complicated. Um, the next set of, certainly we get invited to make some of the full application. Uh, will need C S T to develop those those engineering goals.
Okay, so they they will take on the expensive part.
Right. Yes. Yes. And then more on the study side, where I was jumping ahead, um, seeking some um. Community project funding. Um, through our representative to the. Congress, so Senate's office. I'm trying to secure some dollars to help us with some of the T F S.
Yes.
Studying.
We won't be the only ones asking.
But, um. Well, nonetheless, it's good to, good to ask him.
Be a different of the line.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, and lastly, uh. As a result of um, participation we had with the regional. Uh, effort to look at some alternatives for how to handle. Our byproduct of the. Water plants, you have sludge, bio solids, uh, that currently is a. A cost, and they're costless to truck it away. Um, dispose of it. Uh, this new technology that is emerging that actually takes that waste product and turn it into a. A useful product that generates revenue. So it's, uh. So we, as a result of that, technical assistance study that we participated in, they were actually excited enough to um. Ask us if we would. Pursue a pilot study. Um, and so we submitted a letter of intent, they've asked, D O E has asked us now to submit a full application. Uh, so we're working with the folks who were helping us out at the. National Renewable Energy Lab, M R. So they're doing the heavy lifting for us. Uh, but we do need to come up with some matching dollars, if we're looking with. Some state agencies and and. New power and and, you know, I get to see if there's some. Opportunities to secure some of those matching dollars for the, for the pilot study.
Are these operations that would be done here onsite, or does it still have to get carted off someplace to be?
Gonna be all done here.
All done, okay, so the unit operations.
Depending what you do with the.
Yeah.
Technical term is hydrothermal carbonization, so you actually turn the solid into a carbon.
Mm-hmm.
Char, they call it, and um, you can use that, you can sell that. Uh, and it can be used in in. An asphalt.
So we can. Brave School Street. What's the word?
Or you can also, uh. Use to generate electricity.
Yeah.
You're not, you're not sequestering the carbon when you do that, but you're still getting a. Some, some, some opportunities there.
Sure.
So this would be actually be a mobile unit that would be, you know, we've started here, we'd share it with our immediate neighbors and then eventually it could. Be used anywhere in the state.
Okay, so this is something we come and collect the stuff.
Collect it and do it. And then you collect it. Okay, fine.
Demonstration.
Longer term.
And then you, once you uh, see the success of it and and tailor it to your complete with. Chemistry of your plan, then you can deal with.
Above the waterline.
So, um. Uh, stay tuned, we'll we'll keep you posted. So, um, uh, stay tuned, we'll, we'll keep you posted on how that evolves.
I've got a, I've got a question, kind of related to that a little bit, do we have? A listing of the various studies, at any point in time, they have to be like. Twenty, twenty-five studies going on, I will tell you, you have, as you know, a dozen of them are just through the D P W. They've got them up on the board, but I'm sure all of us get asked from time to time, what are you doing about this? And we know that there are studies going on, we don't necessarily know what areas they're in. But it would be good if we could have a list of all of the studies, and this is a list that only needs to be updated like quarterly. Cause most of these studies are multi, multi-month studies, just to know what's going on. And, uh, some of them are tied to grants, I know that. But I think that would be very informative for us, and in fact, I think it's something you put on the website, so people would kind of see.
Yeah, we start.
All of the things that go on in the background.
Yeah, we, we started that we need to be better.
Yeah, and I'm sure the D P W is number one in terms of the most studies that are involved, they're dealing with, but, uh, it cuts across other departments here, I'm sure.
Yes, it is.
So it would be helpful, I think, for all of us.
Yep, yeah, absolutely.
And, and also perhaps from some perspective, yeah, and how much of those studies is supported by our taxpayer dollars? And I know a lot of them, it's coming from state or federal or something, but it would be also, uh, that would be a good piece of information. Thank you.
That seems to have.